First order of business is we need to approve some of our prior work session minutes. So is there a motion to approve our work session minutes from March 5th, March 12th, March 24th, March 31st, and April 2nd?
No motion.
You got it. Laurie got both. You can add a second. All right. Any questions or comments on that minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say no, that motion passes. We will go straight into our main order of business today with basically a budget discussion. I want to preface it with just a few, a few words. Just want everyone to know, first of all, no decisions will be made today. This is going to be the first of probably many discussions on this, on this subject. Plan on having another one, a follow-up next week and as many as we need to in the next, in the next coming weeks. Obviously, this is a very, very fluid situation. We don't know really where things are going to go. But what I want to do is really, as we do with most things in Kirkwood, take a reserved, methodical approach to this. Russ started this off and he'll talk in a few minutes with some of his thoughts and proposed ideas for cuts to the budget. Again, ultimately, council makes the decisions on these and others, whether we keep them in, take them out. We might have other ideas ourselves on what should be included, not included. But I think the important thing is, is that, you know, this is not a panic situation from that we, that we have to do something today and then it's fine. That's why we're going to talk about it today, get the discussion started, talk about it again next week, if we have to talk about it the week after, just so we really, really look at this. You know, the revenues are just, we don't know what that's going to be, whether from sales tax, any government, potential government funds or grants that we get. So we just have to be patient with the fluidity of that and just really concentrate right now on, you know, potential cuts and expenditures as we, as we go forward. So again, no decisions will be made today. This is just the first of conversations on this subject. And so I'm going to turn it over to Russ. If you want to go ahead and kind of go through what you sent to council, we can start the discussion.
Absolutely, Mayor. Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody getting together today to discuss this. Obviously, this is an important time in the, in the city when we have to discuss possible revenue shortfalls derived really as a result of the coronavirus situation, the shutdown of economic activity in the city of Kirkwood, as well as the entire country and basically the whole world. So it's unprecedented. But as the mayor stated, we are not in a, what I would consider a crisis situation with regard to our operations are from it because we have had smart and effective financial management over decades at this city and have built up what, you know, some people would call rainy day fund or whatever. Just a fun balance that helps us to weather these types of scenarios. This type of scenario came up with the Great Recession in 2008 and to a lesser extent in some other scenarios as well. But this one's very sudden, very unanticipated, and will really have a significant impact on a set of revenue streams that the city relies upon. And those are the ones derived from sales taxes primarily. We do expect a loss of revenue in the coming quarter, the quarter that we're in currently, as well as when we receive the sales tax receipts from the end of last quarter, which was the entire month of March. That's when the stay-at-home order went into effect. And the impact will be seen when we receive those receipts. We're not in a cash short situation in any stretch of the imagination. City continues to operate as normally as possible. However, it is prudent to determine what items we can save on, what priorities are the most important for the city to provide the essential services to its citizens. And that's where we are right now as a staff. We're evaluating all of our capital projects and all of our operations to determine, you know, what are the absolutes and what are the things that we may need to adjust or cut. So what we have is proposed budget considerations to better position the city for the expected loss in revenue from the current coronavirus situation. The budget cuts and purchase holds proposed would help offset the impact of what we at the city of Kirkwood would expect to be an approximately 20% drop in sales tax receipts for the fiscal year. That doesn't mean a 20% drop this month or next month. We're actually projecting a 75% drop this month and next month. But also some recovery hopefully thereafter. Because we're basing our projections on the stay-at-home order as it is now to continue through June 1. So basically, the months of March, April, and May being significantly impacted. In this fiscal year, it's really only April and May. So what we're projecting is a 75% loss of revenue in those months. And then a 50% loss of revenue in June as things begin to pick back up. And then in the second quarter of the fiscal year, which starts in July, having revenues come in at 70%, 80%, and 90%. So basically, a loss to 30, 20, and 10 through October 1. So these six months, there will be a significant drop in revenue. Between April 1 and October 1, that is the projection. Now, we also have looked at more concerning scenarios where revenue could drop 30% or even 40% over the year from sales taxes. Those are not seen right now as the most likely scenarios, but they are held in consideration because we have to look at the worst case as well as better case scenarios. We do feel the most likely scenario is that some semblance of normalcy could return by October 1. But there will be a ramp up to that. So with a 20% loss over the entire year in sales tax receipts, that is between $2 and $2.4 million across all tax-derived revenue streams, all sales tax-derived revenue streams. And those revenue streams include the 1% general sales tax, which accrues to the general fund and sits at approximately $3.4 million in this year's budget. Local option sales tax, which accrues to the general fund, and that is approximately $1.1 million. Fire protection sales tax, which accrues to the general fund, approximately $1.3 million. The use tax, and that's a little separate analysis that, that it actually may increase in this scenario because our use tax is primarily derived through online purchases for venues that have a physical presence in the state of Missouri, such as Walmart and things along those lines, Target and Amazon. Those three entities have physical presences and they also have a very large online presence. So we do receive a use tax there and that could possibly increase as a result of all the online activity from people being at home. Currently, we have that budgeted at $620,000 for this fiscal year. The prop key sales tax, which is not a sales tax that accrues to the city of Kirkwood, but is derived through the county and is distributed on a formula basis and accrues to our general fund on that distribution of approximately $1.5 million per year, and that's what we have in the budget. Also, our capital improvement sales tax, which accrues to the capital improvement fund, that has approximately $2.2 million budgeted. And the park sales tax, which accrues to the park capital improvement fund at approximately $2.6 million. So those are the funds that we expect, and those are the sales tax receipts through the different funds that we expect to have a 20% loss over the fiscal year. As I said, that's over $2 million. With that type of loss, particularly in the general fund, we, which is our main operating fund, we felt that it is imperative that we identify a scenario and a plan to move forward to accommodate those lesser revenues and not put fiscal strain on the city, which means cutting on the other side of the ledger, the expenses. So we've worked with the department heads and particularly our finance department head, who is Sandy Stevens, and she is on this, in this meeting, on this call. And we've identified an approach that we feel will allow us to keep the city functioning in most capacities to the same levels that it normally does for these, for this fiscal year, while identifying priorities that may need to be put on hold and pushed to future fiscal years. Those are primarily capital. Capital expenditures that, that total almost $2.7 million have been identified in these, in this plan that you have before you. And I'm going to have Freddie place up the single PDF, the single sheet PDF called Proposed Budget Adjustments, or it's actually, I believe, Budget Cuts, if he's going to put that on the screen. I'd like to go over those with you. What you can see here at the top is the general fund. And you'll notice immediately that doesn't have anywhere near as many cuts or proposed cuts as the rest of the sheet. And that is because the general fund is made up primarily of personnel. And we've tried to keep the personnel hold through this scenario. One of the reasons we're looking to keep the personnel hold is that as we ramp back up, which could be as soon as two months from now, if we can keep everybody where they are, not furlough, not layoff, we can really continue the services well and to the quality that our citizens would expect. And that is our goal. So what we've cut in the general fund is a couple of administrative items, administration department items, a survey, and the yearly planning section. Also, we have, with police department vehicles, we transferred to the capital fund approximately $222,000 budgeted. We would not be buying any vehicles this year and we'll talk about that when we talk about capital. P and D Services, which is Planning and Development Services, Streetscape Analysis, which was $85,000. Some forestry expenditures totaling $120,000 that have been identified as being able to wait. And an inter-fund forbearance for interest of $79,650, totaling $549,000 in savings to the general fund over the year. Now, the capital improvement fund, and I'm not going to list every one of these, but everything from vehicles to curb machines, some engineering projects such as Vision Zero, which I know that has been a priority and that's suggested as an example of something we need to talk with council about. Mini pumper has been a priority in the fire department. That's $330,000. The ERP is a priority really from some of the city operations standpoint to maximize efficiency in the long term. But is it necessary right now in a situation where we do not have, where we have questionable cash flow from sales tax? Probably not. So, and that's $525,000 in this fiscal year. So these adjustments total $1.9 million in capital improvement funds. Then we look at a couple of enterprise funds, water and sanitation funds. And again, we're looking at vehicles primarily and also a GPS and routing software installation of about $100,000. And the total combined there is about $441,000 in savings. If we do not expend those in this fiscal year.
Apparently Laurie says there's no video, but you can see it here.
That helps to adjust our
Something with the screen sharing button.
Our cash expenditures
Probably figure that out.
For the fiscal year to offset the projected loss in revenues and really marginally only impact the quality of services that we provide to our citizens. We'd still continue with all our departments. That's not to minimize the fact that if we have or are cognizant of changes that are more significant than those that are anticipated now, if we get word on that, in other words, the receipts start coming in at a lesser value or the stay-at-home order is extended beyond June and into the summer, then we would have to reevaluate and certainly consider more extensive measures and even perhaps things such as layoffs. But at this point, we feel that we can preserve the integrity of our workforce and preserve the services that citizens expect, you know, sanitation, everything that, that you need as you're at home and expect from the city. Good police quality, good fire quality, EMS is imperative right now. No cuts to ongoing services in, in our public safety. You know, the things that we talked about are a couple of vehicles and those could wait a year. So that is the intent from management's perspective to get this discussion started. I do want to touch base on what the effect here is with regard to reserves and revenues and expenditures over the fiscal year. In the current fiscal year, in our current budget, we were anticipating a use of reserves of 1.6 million. Now, that is a number that is calculated to help balance the budget. We don't typically actually burn into reserves on a yearly basis and we weren't anticipating to do so this year. As a matter of fact, we've actually added to reserves each of the last four years. And we were anticipating that with a normal situation with revenues. Obviously, with our revenues being depleted by 20% on the sales and use tax side, we may have to burn into reserves to some extent. And we were actually, with this scenario, if council were to say, okay, hold off on these purchases that are outlined here, with this scenario, we would see an additional $1 million added to that reserves number of 1.6 million. And Freddie, if you could pull that up, the other PDF. There it is. Thank you. That $1.6 million that's at the top of that page would go to 2.6 million. And you can see that on the second page of the PDF. If you scroll down, I'm not sure how to make that move. That's all right. Maybe Freddie can get it too. There we go. You can see that move from 1.6 in the reserves to 2.6. That number is actually use of reserves in, in the budget. And as I explained before, the reason we don't use those reserves typically is because we don't expend all of the monies in our budget year to year. We expend usually between 94 and 96 million, I mean, 96% of the budget in a given year. So those reserves are not always burned and typically are not at all. But, so what I want council to really understand from this one diatribe that I just went through is that it would possibly tap into reserves to approach that, to approach this in the manner that we're proposing. But we don't know that it would. And it's certainly a level, we have cash reserves currently at the city of approximately $11 million and maybe even more than that when we have our audited numbers back this year. But our estimate is around $11 million. And that is the rainy day fund. And that's really what, what it's there for. And I think that we can weather the storm intact, to some extent, into the new normal, which we don't know what that is yet. But when it becomes more clear, we may have to make further adjustments. But we feel these are appropriate adjustments to be made prior to the next quarter. And the next quarter being July 1. So, and we'll have more information by July 1 as to whether we need to do more to adjust to the changing situation in the world. So I'm open to any questions from council at this point.
Thank, thank you, Russ. Again, just stressed how fluid this, this situation is and that's why we're going to have a continuous conversation on it, a very, very regular conversation. So we can, we can hear from Russ perspectives on outlooks and if, what adjustments are needed expense-wise and, and revenue-wise. There's one other item on here that I'm, that I'm going to ask Russ and Bill to talk about later. So I'm just going to ask when council goes through the questions, let's just leave this topic. It has to do with recycling. So I know that's a, that's a big item we've been talking about for a couple of years. So that, if we could just hold off on any questions on recycling when we, after we get through all council questions or comments, I'll have Russ and Bill go back to that. So what, what I'm going to do today, we don't have a format, so I'm just going to go right to questions from council in terms of seniority. So we'll go, start first with council member Lizzo.
Sorry. User, user error again. Well, you all may have seen the whole list of things that I emailed to Russ earlier because I didn't want to monopolize the conversation tonight. So I, I guess I just want to say quickly, thank you so much to staff to Russ for bringing all of this to us. So quickly, I think it's really important that we, that we talk about this and, and keep an eye on things as we move forward. As, as Russ said, we, we do have a healthy amount of reserves. I don't feel like there's any need for the city of Kirkwood to panic, but we definitely need to plan, hope for the best, plan for the worst. So I, as far as specific questions, I'm, there are just a couple of things that I'm wondering about prioritizing and what, you know, when would we possibly sort of put the possible cuts? When would we pull the trigger on possibly cutting things as, as time goes forward? And how much of an impact delaying things would have on whatever? Let's say Vision Zero. And I don't know how much that $75,000 has, has to do, that has to do with the actual implementation of the program. So it's, it's just sort of a timing thing. If and when we cut, how might that have an outsized negative impact on that program? And I'm guessing that staff looked into these kinds of questions as they were looking at prioritizing what might be cut? I don't know if any of this rambling makes any sense. So I'll, I'll, I'll just be quiet. Maybe Russ or somebody could possibly kind of address if there's any sense in what I just said for the past two minutes.
Russ, can I say something first on that? Just, you know, what I'm kind of looking at is this is the initial list from staff that we can, you know, discuss today. Probably next week when we, when we do a work session, we should probably make some decisions on these. Council again may have other ones to add or take off. So from a timing standpoint, I think we'll, we'll keep it going so that Russ knows what council's, you know, thought is in general, the items, whether they're from staff or from council. Now, how these specifically work time-wise is to, how that would, the cuts would be implemented. Russ, I'll turn that over to you.
Yeah. First of all, I, I want to make clear that this is really an a la carte This is so funny to watch. type of approach that council needs to digest a little bit. Not with the food references, but it's, it's something that you need to think about and be ready to discuss maybe more in depth at the next meeting. This is an introduction to what we have analyzed as being possibilities
Making it all possible.
to get to a place that positions us better to weather this storm. Any item on here is subject to discussion, okay? And the rationale that went into coming with these items and not others is when we looked at capital improvements, the, over the years, city council has prioritized road projects at the very top. So we looked at a way to preserve the road projects that we have in our current budget. That includes grant-funded projects and includes our street restoration program, the fifth cycle of which would be for the northeast sector of town. So we, we looked to preserve that high priority. And these are the things that were not listed and it was unclear as to what the priority level is. So I think next meeting will be to establish those priorities and see if certain items here are preserved or if we substitute other things to get to the same place. As far as timing, right now, everything on this list has not been expended yet, which means, you know, we're, everything's on hold. This is a holding pattern that the city is in right now. From the moment we went on a stay-at-home order and we went to the NIM system, the National Incident Management System, we put a freeze, or I put a freeze on hiring and a hold on purchases of any significant amount that, that can wait. And that includes the Bobcat that was discussed and approved by council last week. And we have not purchased that. It's got an approval, doesn't mean it's been purchased. And I know there's an article in the paper reporting on that and so forth, but that's, it's almost neither here nor there right now because I would be looking for council to reconsider that, at least in light of this whole discussion. These items are not looking to be purchased in the next week, two, three, or month. And they're on hold because we don't feel it is prudent to expend funds at this time in the city of Kirkwood.
It's just one more question. So in Sandy's memo about when revenues actually come in, it's typically towards the start of the month from DOR as well as St. Louis County. when revenues actually come in, it's typically towards the start of the month from DOR as well as St. Louis County. And the, the seventy-five percent decrease for us that you cited and then the twenty percent overall for the maybe fiscal year twenty, twenty-one. Are those, are those based on, on like revenues that, that we may have received March seventh and April seventh? Or these are more like just extrapolations?
They're extrapolations. We don't have a crystal ball to determine exactly what percentage of revenue we're going to receive. It's going to be very enlightening in May when we receive March receipts. Because March was the first impact. February will be quite normal. And we'll receive those this month. So the numbers we get this month will not reflect any of the coronavirus, I don't believe. But when you get to May, that will be March's receipts. June will be April's. Those are the ones we expect to be, that's when we receive them. June seventh, June tenth, May seventh, May tenth. Those are when we will receive the receipts from March and April. Or from April and March in that order.
Okay, okay. Well, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Maggie, you're next.
As far as Vision Zero goes, I, after looking at that, I've been thinking, Bill, can, can, can we talk at some point and maybe do a Zoom with Kara and Mark and the Alta folks and even Vision Zero? Because everybody's going to have the same, the same situation. And get some ideas from them of how we can move forward without the money at this point. So we can't, maybe we could start putting together those three committees, the education, engineering and enforcement and look at what they're going to be doing and just kind of lay a whole lot of groundwork. So when we do get the funding, we're ready to rock. So can we Zoom with, though, can we, can you and I talk later about putting together that Zoom like sometime this week or next week? And see if we can start that.
You're still muted, Bill.
Bill needs to unmute.
Mark, are you and Kara good, good with that? Have anything to add to that?
I think it's a good idea to see what we can do without the money. Obviously, it's not, it's not critical that we spend it now, but you know, anything that we can do to be prepared, and this is just one good example of, you know, if we have our ducks in a row and are ready to move forward, once we can spend that money and we're comfortable with spending it, then great, then we'll be ready to move forward.
Hit the ground running. Yeah.
That's right. Yep.
No, go, Bill.
Nope, still can't hear Bill. How many microphones working on us?
Bill, can you hear me?
Just nod your head if that sounds like a good idea, Bill.
Yeah, nod your head.
Yes, he can't hear a thing you're saying.
He can't hear a thing, Maggie.
Why don't we email tomorrow and see what we can be doing?
Maggie, that's, you know, that, that was one I was, I was going to mention before you talk. I mean, that could be the thing if we decide, you know, Vision Zero maybe to take that funding out in a few months when thing, if things look different, it can get put back in. That's the, that's the thing. That's why we're going to continue to look at this all together. So.
Correct, correct. And I, I just think the more we get done before that happens, because it will happen. And at some point, we need to talk about when we're going to make the commitment to doing it within ten years or however many years. But the more we can get done before then, I think that'd be great.
Good, good. Is there anything else, Maggie?
Nope, that's it.
Ellen, you look unmuted now.
I am, thanks to Freddie. Thank you, Freddie. Well, first, could, could I please just ask a, a question or two of you, Russ, on, on the, what you gave us? The, the planning's, let's see, the planning session and facilitator. I'm assuming we could have a planning session without a facilitator, without, just on the ground somewhere here in Kirkwood?
Oh, yes.
For, for
Yeah, we're gonna, we're going to need
Like a no budget.
Yeah, we're going to need to have budget discussions, really probably pretty intense ones because at that time, we're still going to be in the throes of whatever recovery or trying to get back to a new normal we're in and we'll have to have discussions. It's just the actual physical location and upheaval and so forth that was involved previously that we just, we canceled that entirely. So that has been, that's not on hold.
That's good. No, we can do without, we can do without that. Pavement striping, is that going to have an impact on safety? I mean, does that include things like crosswalks and replacing the lines that aren't, that are wearing away?
Conceivably, yes. Oh, we got Bill again.
Yes. That would, that would, most of that striping is for recapping existing stripes. And it's the crosswalks.
Okay, well, that's, yeah, that's a little bit concerning, I guess. And then patrol, is that actually having police out in their cars?
No, patrol, you should read patrol vehicles.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. That's, that's good. Thank you. All right. So I guess, you know, I did want to, I did want to talk about the recycling, but I know we're, we're heading that off, which is good till the end of this discussion. But I was wondering about the impacts of reduced economic activity on, on our payments to the electric company. And, you know, the sales tax that we get from that, the gross receipts tax. Do you anticipate that being a large additional chunk of revenue that we lose?
To me, that's a really tough call as to what the effect is going to be there. We looked at sales tax because that's a real direct linkage. We're looking at these secondary and tertiary impacts of the shutdown of the economy to the level that we are. You know, there, there are some strange happenings that occur. We're not going to be expending as much money on gasoline. So I don't know whether that could help offset if we had some gross receipts tax loss or what level of loss there are. It's, it's really an interesting, all the linkages to the economy that the city reflects, I guess. You know, the businesses reflect a certain type, you know, what'll happen with business licenses. I mean, are we going to have businesses going out of business or? And if we do, would there not be ones to fill those spaces or will there be more and there's really not much of a loss? It's real tough to call that right now.
No, I know.
Especially where we have federal money being sent through the PPP program for, you know, for individual small businesses to cover some of their losses.
So do you, yeah, I'm sorry. I know that is pretty far out. I just wondered if that, if that was something we thought about yet. And then about like the pool and the ice rink, I know we, that the ice rink is a, actually like a revenue source, but if we don't open the pool and the if we don't open the pool or the day camp, are we actually going to lose revenue on that or do we end up?
We say
Sensitizing those. You know, by the time we don't have the expenses and then we don't have the, the fees for people using them.
No, I mean, we've already contemplated it. Yes, we've already figured right to the dollar pretty much what we would expect to save by closing the pool for the summer. It's around a hundred thousand dollars savings.
Okay. All right. I, I think that's, that's all for right now. Thanks. Thank you. I appreciate, I, I know this is really tough and I appreciate what you're doing. I sincerely do.
Yeah. We can, we can come back for more questions. So don't worry if this is something. Mark?
Well, Russ, thank you for all this work. A lot of my questions have been answered. As far as capital improvements, is there anything that you feel can't be cut that's not on this list?
No, I don't think there's anything that can't be cut.
Okay.
I, I, we can cut just about anything in capital improvements. And when we say cut, it could mean pushing it to another year or something along those lines.
Sure, sure. Is there anything that's not on this list that is, is as large, you know, what kind of financial impact would something that's not on this list have? How much deeper can we cut versus, you know, one point nine million of capital improvements?
If the city decided that we wanted to hold or not do road improvements, that's about four million dollars.
Yeah. So if, you know, if this, if this extends longer than, you know, what we think is going to end in May or June, you know, that may be an option that we have to take a look at down the road.
It conceivably could be. Of course, it would probably be underway by then.
That's the tough part.
And that, that's, the fact of the matter is those are moving full steam ahead right now. Because we have about two and a half million dollars worth of grant funds being infused and Guyer has been waiting and we've been waiting to have Guyer done and that's receiving federal funding. You wouldn't want to miss out on that necessarily.
No, no. And yeah, some of that, some of that may be, it may be really tough to look at cutting some of that just because of what you mentioned.
Right, quant, right now, we're just waiting to sign contracts on.
Yeah, yeah. So it, you know, that may not be on the table if we're moving forward with it. So and I don't know what, you know, if, if this is longer than what we think, you know, if we're going to be able to be okay, even though we're spending that money. You know, maybe that's something we need to think about sooner than later. If you think that, that it's, you know, depending upon how this goes now, you know, this changes, it seems to change on a daily basis. You know, whether or not, you know, this is going to wind down in May, you know. Initial suggestion was it'd be over by Sunday and it's obviously not. So you know, that was very optimistic.
Yeah, it depends on who's making the suggestions.
That's right, that's right. So anyway, that's all I have for now. Thank you very much, Russ.
Thanks, Mark. Wallace?
Okay, yeah, thanks, Russ. And for the staff, I know everybody's working hard over there as usual. And I know this is kind of a dream project you'd like to have, Russ, is to be able to take on a big controversy that you didn't start. You know, I wanted to talk a little bit about the estimate approaches that we used. And I know you don't have a, a really super crystal ball, but did, did we take into consideration any of the countywide projections that might be forthcoming since we're kind of tied to a lot of revenue that comes through the county on a per capita basis?
We did not consult with the county in these analyses, no. But unless the county were to change its formulas for distribution, which is always a possibility because one of the things where P passed was it did not enshrine the formula in the vote itself. So they can change that formula. They could keep more for themselves and give less to the municipalities. If that happens, that's something that's out of our control.
Yeah, and if, if we look at, you know, I, I'm assuming that municipality by municipality, we're going to all suffer about the same, the same sales impact. You know, I don't know that we have anything that's, that's truly unique to Kirkwood's sales tax revenue mix versus other, say, Maryland height.
No, I agree.
With the exception of, of the, so I just, I'm, you know, my thought is that we would have a better chance of being right if we were matching more of the surrounding municipalities with our estimates.
Yeah, well, I, I have had numerous Zoom type meetings just like this with city managers from around the area. And there, there is a, a range of beliefs on the impacts and we think that we've hit a, a most likely scenario with the seventy-five percent over the two months that in this fiscal year that are impacted through the stay at home order and then a gradual ramp up through October one.
Okay. Then on, on the streets on capital improvements. You know, I'm, I'm, I don't think anybody wants to have us have a general slowdown in, in street improvements because they are a high priority for everybody in the city. But I'm wondering if we wouldn't in the aggregate want to change our approach to those and take on more of the severe need streets. I understand the philosophy of what we've been doing with taking care of some that need minor repair and, and, you know, you know what I'm saying in terms of the mix of whether you're the, the worst street in the city versus the best street in the city. If, if that conservative approach wouldn't make more sense. And I, and I say that also in that I think reasonable people can expect that the feds are going to be throwing a lot of capital improvements monies out here in the way of grants and, and larger grants and participation in that coming, going forward. And it, it might benefit us to have left some on the table, left more on the table to take advantage of that, that, you know, additional money coming out of DC. Now, I, I think we need to have some conversations with folks in DC to make sure that they're promoting that kind of thing and that they're in agreement that those kinds of dollars are going to be coming as we approach that. But I, I'm, I'm wondering if there would be much upheaval if we went to that change in, in how we're doing our street repair.
I would highly recommend that that discussion occur after the fifth cycle is complete. Because I think it's only fair and equitable to the people of the northeast segment of the city who have not received their fair treatment yet because we've moved through the other sections of the city for the previous four years. To change it midstream like that would harm equitability.
Sure, I, yeah, I'm not saying you wouldn't do that. I'm just saying you'd take care of more of the worst streets in that segment for this last section, for this last, this fifth year, rather than taking care of some of their less severe need streets.
I wouldn't change the approach in the cycle that we're in. That's, that would be my recommendation at this point.
Is that in terms of what we'd spend the money on in that area or how we'd spend the money?
I, I'm not sure exactly where you're when you say what or how.
Yeah, so I'm saying, I'm saying, you know, if we reduce, if we have a street that, that simply needs crack and seal repair, let's save that money. Let's leave that in, in, in the pot and spend the money that we have on those more severe needs areas that, you know, you need a complete overlay, you know. Bill will know what I'm speaking about in terms of redesign and reconstruction versus minor repairs. If, if we're going to get something done for people right now, I think getting the most important, the most severe needs done is, is everyone will understand that. Doesn't mean could not come back and, and take care of more streets in that area.
I'm just going to give you a hypothetical. If the severe needs only are completed in that area, you may have five streets done and no others. Whereas if we do the way we have done it previously, you'll have resurfacing of about thirty streets. I don't know which is perceived as better. Guess that's something that council may want to discuss at some point.
Okay, yeah, it's, you know, it's just a question at this point. I don't, I don't have the answer. I'm just saying, you know, what that might look like. The, the other thing that I was concerned about was communication, cross-communication. We've always extended a great deal of autonomy to the park board, and we're talking about a pretty severe change for them in terms of funding. And I'm wondering for the council if it wouldn't be appropriate, did we at least meet with the executive committee for the park board to discuss what kinds of cuts that they may be considering as priorities and, and take that into our calculus as we make approval of budget changes? And that's it for me.
All right, thanks, Wallace. Kara?
Hey, Russ, I know you were hiring freeze right now. And I do remember, I think there's probably about two brand-new positions in the budget that I went back and kind of totaled that were, you know, some, some dollar amounts. Has there been any research into how much maybe the lack of attrition or not hiring those amounts, how much those might affect the bottom line?
Yes, we've, we've looked at some of the, the impact of, both operationally and fiscally, of not hiring those positions. And that's a wide-open possibility at this point. I certainly would want to not hire before letting existing people go.
Right, no, and that's, no, absolutely. But I just know that sometimes the new hire thing is easier to put off so that we can take care of the, the employees we have on hand now. The other thing I have, so it, it kind of sounds what I'm getting from the other questions relating to the revenue from, when it comes in from the county. We don't have any kind of way to forecast that a month or two out, do we? It's basically, we wait until we get that number, or is there a way that you can forecast?
In normal times, we can absolutely forecast it out based on prior years in that month. Because there, there are retail sales trends, obviously. November and December are huge months for retail sales because of Christmas holiday and so forth. But, you know, in odd times like this, unprecedented times such as this, I, it's very difficult for me to hazard a guess as to what the county retail sales will be other than what we have figured is our best guess, which is about down 75%.
Okay, understood. I think everything else I have is kind of answered and our question didn't answer, so, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Why don't we then just go into the, you know, the big question that we've, you know, we've been dealing with the last, you know, couple of years? And that's the whole issue of really recycling, which is something we're going to have, we were going to have to, you know, address in some way, you know, in normal times. So it's probably now just a good time to at least, again, have Russ and Bill explain, you know, costs with recycling, and then we can give consideration to it in the near, near future as to what, what we want to do with it. So Russ, you want to go ahead and take that?
Yeah, and I'll probably lean on Bill here in a minute. But right now, our recycling cost is about three times the cost for each ton to process. It's about three times the cost of regular solid waste to process that. So where we used to receive revenue from our recycling operation and, and sort of targeted collection of certain types of items, bailing the cardboard and, you know, separating things out and so forth, we used to receive $15 per ton for the single-stream curbside recycling, which means everything all piled in a container and shipped. We received 15 a ton until a year and a half ago. That's when it became clear through changes in the markets globally that that type of revenue was going to cease. It has gone in the exact opposite direction, and now we are paying exorbitant amounts for people to take our recycling and find something to do with it that recycles. It's just the cost of processing in the market today is, for lack of a better term, exorbitant. $105 per ton was our last month's charge for recycling. 37 or 38 per ton was our last month's charge for regular solid waste. So when people put their cans out on the curb, that one that is green in color, or whatever, I guess it's blue, blue in color?
Green.
Green, it is green. Didn't remember what color my can was there for a second. That's green in color, costs three times more to empty, just think of it that way. And what that does to our recycle, to our solid, to our sanitation budget is incredible. It's, we were projecting a loss this year of around $900,000 if we were to continue at the same rates that we're paying right now and with the same rates we're charging our citizens right now for sanitation. We can't sustain that, and we knew that going into this year, and we talked about it last year. And we said, well, okay, let's see what the markets do. Let's see if recycling, recycling processors set up shop and so forth. But they aren't, and it hasn't happened. So what we would, at this point, say to council is, we're going to have to revisit the situation. We're going to have to determine if we want to charge more to the citizens to continue recycling and what that charge will be, or if we want to scrap curbside recycling altogether and just leave the rates basically what they are because we believe were we to scrap it all together, we wouldn't have to raise rates to break even. And Bill, you certainly can add on to that.
Right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make sure. Basically, we did a cost-of-service analysis this past week, and Russ has gone over quite, quite a bit of it. And, you know, I went back to our first day, we did that in 2015 on this exact same subject. And it basically has come to fruition now. Back then, we felt we had a certain amount of years to, to continue at what we were. And then we got thrown the, the sidebar of the, of the recycling crisis, which has just accelerated it all now. In our initial analysis, you know, like Russ was saying, that it's $900,000 something thousand with what our deficit is, and we went through our cost-of-service analysis for just to provide the recycling program and a depository, that's $900,000 right there that we generate no revenue from. So if you take those services out, you're, you're basically right on target for your trash service, okay? And back then in 2015, we looked at alternatives also that went from, you know, eliminating curbside recycling, privatization, and then what we went with was rate increases. And basically, we're, we're in the exact same situation right now. This is our last year of operation. We will chew through that. Our reserve fund is about $1.1 million. And so if we spend all of our money, which we typically don't spend all of our money in every year, you know, we would be, we'd burn through our reserves and, and not, we would not have the cash flow for the coming year, for FY '22, basically. So that's where we are. We did some rate projections and things of that nature. If we wanted to keep recycling, we know what those, those rates are, would be, and things of that nature. But that's where we stand right now. It's not, again, it's not one of those critical things. We got our, we got to make that decision before, within the next six months, I would say. But we need to know that because the sooner we, if we change our rates, the sooner we can prop ourselves up financially as we move forward. So there is some, not real urgency, but there is some, you know, you don't want to wait and make this decision until November.
Russ?
No, no, I, I absolutely feel we must make this decision sooner rather than later. The, the numbers, when you look at what our rates are currently and Webster Groves, I believe, and Bill, you may have this right in front of you. I don't have it right, yes, I did.
Right, we did a.
Reach over here, I got it.
We did a rate comparison.
Yeah.
And with that rate comparison, basically, right now, Webster Groves, in, as of June 1 of 2020, their basic service is going to go to $23.34. And DePares, they're in their last year of their contract, and they're at $21.09. So it's hard to say what that's going to be after they rebid that, okay? Our current rate, of course, is $20.50 right now for our basic service. That's where we are in rate comparison.
Right, so, I mean, basically, we are lower than both of those. Now, those have some different types of services and the way they, obviously, they include yard waste, and we do pay as you can go, pay-as-you-go yard waste, which I don't think is a bad thing. I think pay-as-you-go yard waste is a very fair way for people who have bigger yards. They pay a little bit more and so forth. So, you know, we're, we're looking at exactly what it would take to either break even or get us in a stronger position going forward. And we can have that discussion maybe next week with council as to where perhaps you all feel, or we can do a separate work session. This is up to mayor certainly as to when and how we want to have this discussion.
I think on that, on that front, Russ, I think what would be helpful is, I was going to, I said earlier, a lot of this stuff, you know, you know, is not irreversible. But I, obviously, any recycling decision would be irreversible. But if we're losing that kind of money, I think that's something we, we've got to take care of sooner than later. And if possible, in the next, you know, week or so, if you could, or, you know, through Bill, you know, let, give us the numbers, what, what are we talking, what would the cost be? What it would take per month to stay, you know, stay cost-neutral on it? What impact would there be to the sanitation service, the recycling depository? If you could just get us that information, and then we can start having the discussion. Because I mean, that's a, that's a big deal, whether it's increasing rates or stopping, you know, the service altogether. And just one quick thing, you had mentioned yard waste. We had a mayor's meeting today, obviously via Zoom. And one of the things that came up, Bill probably knows, just Republic Services, who does a lot of the yard waste, is basically stop picking up yard waste for a while. So there's a lot of, I think, in many communities, some in County Sumot and St. Charles areas. I think there's just with recycling and yard waste, there's just going to be a lot of different, going to be a lot of different, different things going on in the market out there. So, but if we, if we could get something in the near future from you, just on a synopsis of that, and so we can start talking about that and make some decisions in, in the near future, so.
Yeah, Bill, Bill's been, just delivered me a draft of a memorandum that we'll probably be forwarding to you here in the coming days. We're going to finalize that and make sure that it's accurate as can be at this point. And you'll have something to refer to.
Great, thank you. I want to go back through council on questions or comments on the recycling. Councilmember Lizzo?
Well, thank you. So, a few weeks ago, Russ, you and Georgia, or Georgia maybe, had put together a flash vote survey, a kind of a draft to ask citizens before this whole kind of crisis situation came on us. I'm just wondering if you've given that any more thought? Or do we, do, how do we want to sort of involve the citizens maybe in this decision? Which everybody seems to be extremely interested in sanitation. That, that and streets are like the big two items that they definitely, that maybe touch them the most and they're, they follow most closely. So I'm just wondering if you're thinking about a flash vote? Or, or, I mean, I really feel like we do need to get on this because it, we're talking a substantial amount of money that it's costing us. So this would just be a discussion with council? Or, or do we have time to ask the citizens what their preference would be? Or we would come up with maybe one or two options to ask them which they would prefer in a, a, maybe some kind of a citizen survey? Or how you sort of envision, you know, taking the pulse of citizens or making this decision in light of the increasing cost and all of that?
Well, I think that we had discussions about that flash vote just before this hit. And it probably would have been conducted by now had it, had we not gone into sort of a, a turn inward mode to make sure that we are, have our house in order and so forth. I think that there is still an opportunity to involve the citizens to the level at which council wishes. We certainly wouldn't want to stand in the way of that.
Um, could I get clarification maybe from you or Bill? When you talk about a $900,000 loss, is that attributed solely to recycling? Or is recycling is kind of a line item in the sanitation department? And, or exactly, how do we look at that $900,000 number?
I'll let Bill go with that.
Okay, the deficit is the total budget for all operations and all services, okay? So that's where the $900,000 comes from, okay? Then we did a cost of service, and we categorized the cost of service out into five categories. Residential, residential waste, recycling, recycling depository. Then we have some, a special business district and yard waste, okay? So we went through each one of those services that we provide and associated the, the cost to those services, okay? And when we went through that, basically, the cost, the cost associated with recycling, our, our solid waste, when you went that and compared it to the revenues that are generated from the program, that came out the only positive one, okay? It came out with, you know, about $200,000 into the positive. When you did it with the recycling, you came out with a loss of $793,000. And then when you compound that with the depository, with its operational cost, because recycling, a depository and the, the recycling curbside does not generate any revenue, okay? That was another $168,000. So you're almost at your $900,000 right there, okay? But then we also looked at the yard waste. Now with the yard waste, it basically breaks even. Every, every year, it just about breaks me even or makes money. This predicted year, it's going to lose money because we need a vehicle, a truck replacement. So that capital that goes towards that is very high. But typically, we're right, we're right around like $6,700 at the end of the year. And that's either negative or positive, all based on the, the weather of the year, okay? And then we had a special business district, which they generate a revenue of $40,000 a year. But the actual, actual operation of that is wrapped into the residential solid waste collection, okay? But that one just still breaks even in that aspect. So that's about how it breaks out. Where recycling is, is the operational cost is the biggest deficit.
Okay. Um, well, and, right, the depository is open to anyone in the region who wants to use it. And not just citizens, who the cost is sort of rolled into our $20 to $0.50 or what a monthly charge.
Correct.
I mean, it, it's a difficult problem to discuss because I think, you know, we're all on board with saving the environment, using less, going green. But when you're talking about almost a million dollars loss, that's, that's getting into some, some quite a, a difficult number to, to deal with. So I don't know if, if it's possible if we would look at maybe suspending curbside recycling, what other alternatives there might be for citizens sorting themselves and dropping off newspapers? and dropping off newspapers or glass, or, or what, what kind of other options? I, as well as maybe looking at a rate increase. I, you just, if, if we could be, be given a, a couple of alternatives on which way to go from here? You said that Republic is no longer accepting yard waste. Does, is, is yard waste, our outlet for yard waste tipping fees?
No, our yard waste, we go to, uh, St. Louis Composting directly. We don't have a middle person on that.
Okay, well, do you think that, that Republic is, is, may actually increase their fees for recycling? Because they're having issues with this whole, with or without the coronavirus stuff? That they're, um, discontinuing yard waste pickup? I'm not sure if, if we could expect the recycling of $100 a ton, or whatever it is, to actually increase? Or, or do what in, in, in response to this? I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, trying, trying to predict how, how, how the tipping fees for recycling might change? Go up or down, given that they are no, they are not accepting recyc, yard waste recycling?
Well, yard waste, uh, I, I believe that Republic still uses St. Louis Composting for their, for their, uh, yard waste, okay? So they're going basically to the same depository that we're going to. What they save is, is operational cost of vehicles, labors, and things of that nature by suspending that type of operation.
And they wouldn't be passing it on to the people who are using them as a, as, as the sorting, uh, uh, disposal? We, we wouldn't, we wouldn't see a change in that $100 per ton tipping fee for recyclables?
No, they, they're, they're similar to us, like different cost centers. So we, we would not see a reduction. We really anticipate an increase because it has been drastically increasing over the last six months.
Okay, okay. Um, that's all for now, thank you.
Nancy?
Um, yeah, I don't know that I have too many questions. Um, first of all, thank you, Russ and Bill, for all your hard work in doing this. The one announcement I have, that I just got an email right before we started, is that the, from the school board, that the rest of the school year is canceled. So, yeah. That's it.
All right, Ellen?
Okay, um, I wanted to just, um, ask a couple things. First, I realize you may have no way of answering this, but how, you know, from what I've heard and read, is it true that we really don't know exactly what's happening to our recyclables?
I feel that I've, we've had this discussion with our, our Republic Services, and I'm confident that they are recycling over 80% of their materials to, uh, other markets. The remaining 15 to 20% is, uh, contamination out of their loads, okay? So I would say everything that's getting, taken to Republic, over 80% of it is being recycled. And they, they've shown verification of that to their, their sources, that they're doing and things of that nature. So I'm very confident that our materials are being recycled out in the market.
Okay, well, that's, that's encouraging. If we did discontinue this, Bill, we would need more people to handle it all as trash? I mean, we'd need more, um, yeah, there would be staff time and vehicle use and everything to handle the rest of the recycling as trash, right?
No, we, we would probably, uh, decrease staff significantly, anywhere from three to five, and keep on and probably add one more route to trash, so we still pick up the city in the, the trash exact same time every day from here on out. That's, we would just have to reallocate one truck, and that's where our operational cost is, is in the trucks and in the, uh, things of that nature.
I thought it was mostly in the dumping, sorry, or the, not dumping, but whatever. Um, this is, this is another question-
Sorry, guys. Sorry.
I'm sorry, this is another question I have. Does it, I have concerns that increasing the fees is really gonna impact people with the lowest incomes, like some of the seniors or people who are just living, uh, using less, buying less, maybe out of necessity? Do we have any feeling for that at all?
Well, I think we could come up with a, um, a, a senior program, let's say. We'd have to be very restrictive upon that. Probably have to come up, we've seen, um, we've seen programs in the past where, where age and income level, uh, have, um, you know, they get a reduced rate, but most of the rates aren't that substantial, uh, like a 10% reduction in the rate.
Yeah.
Uh, so I, I'd be very careful in what we do, and be very specific on the people that we want to offer that re, to, because, you know, if, if you base it on age, then we could have a substantial decrease in our revenues.
I know, I know, I thought of that because we're such an aging community. I think that's all, thanks. I, I guess that's all I've got to say right now. I, I just think that the cost is, is, you know, enormously concerning. And I, I guess I, like Nancy was hinting, it would be great if we could keep the depository open for people who are willing to sort, but that incurs so many costs on its own, that, you know, I kinda get it, and you still have to dispose of whatever comes there, so. I get it, so thank you anyway. It's a thorny problem.
Thank you, Mark?
Yeah, well, to follow up on, uh, what, uh, council member Edmund just said, is there a way to determine, you know, do, if we kept the depository open, you know, would we still incur a loss, and how much would that be? I think, obviously, this is not sustainable the way it is now, but besides either eliminating curbside or raising rates, is there a third option out there? Uh, is there something else that we can be doing differently? I mean, it sounds like the only feasible financial decision is to, is to, is to stop it, because how much are we gonna have to raise rates?
Well, privatization is always the alternative, okay? And, uh, put together a, a performance contract and outsource the, the whole operation. Uh, with, that's what, you know, Webster Groves does, that's what DePares does. Uh, so that's the, that's the other operation. Uh, we've looked at self hauling our, our materials in the vast. Uh, so there's, there's a, there is a huge capital cost in there. Uh, we'd have to, a larger compactor, because our compactor, we need to handle more recycling in a day than our compactor can handle, and we have to buy some equipment for hauling. Uh, we can outsource the hauling, we've looked at that also, but, uh, that will reduce our cost, but not what I would say would be substantial, okay? Because we still have some operating costs that, that, for just hauling it away from the, the site.
Yeah, plus you mentioned buying new equipment, too. So that's-
Right.
You, you would incur additional costs doing that, so.
Yeah, our, our, our equipment right now, we're somewhat in a, I don't wanna say critical stage, but over 50% of our trucks were out of service earlier this week, uh, due to mechanical problems. So the guys are on the streets until, you know, 6, 7 o'clock, trying to get the streets cleaned up. So, you know, the, the purchase of vehicles is very high, but it also affects the delivery of service.
Exactly, I noticed that, you know, neighbors came and asked me if recycling was coming, and it was pretty late in the afternoon when they came and got it, but so-
Correct.
That explains why, so. All right, thank you, Bill, that's all I have.
Wallace?
Yeah, uh, Bill, i- is there any way that, um, the Schiediger Center, the voluntary recycling can break even with just a change in the assortment that we accept?
Uh, I would, I would say no, because the, the Schiediger Center never broke even, even before, uh, operations always exceeded the revenues. Now it's just, uh, now it's very, very scaled to, to the loss side of it now.
Yeah, so if we get out, we need to get all the way out. Curbside and-
Yes, I, I would say so.
Okay, uh, second, what, what do we pay per ton on the yard waste?
$8.50.
$8.50 a ton? All right.
I think, I think that's $8.50 a cubic yard, we pay by the cubic yard.
Okay, um, is there, well, just so we can keep it apples to apples, is there a way to do a conversion and get that in tons?
Uh, yeah, probably, I think I already have that number, I can get that. I think, uh, um, yes, we do that conversion already on our, our charts, okay?
Okay, yeah, yeah, we don't need it right now today, but it'd be interesting just to have that. I think for the taxpayers also, to, to see that comparison, uh, would make sense. In, in terms of equipment, um, the equipment that we have in-house now, if we're not using it for recycling, if the, if the load doesn't require the same amount of equipment, what would we do with the existing equipment? We sell that off, hold it in reserve, or what?
We would probably sell it off, the thing, parts that, the, we, we'd probably go back and look at the, uh, analysis of them, and the ones that are in high maintenance, we'd probably sell off, and keep the ones that are of, of better condition. Because we'd like to have like a, a 30% reserve on our, our vehicles and, and our staff, because we can't, we have to account for, you know, a broken down truck, okay? And things of that nature, so we have to have a, a reserve of vehicles in sight. But I, what, that, what happens is that our capital expenditures will start to decrease initially if we're not buying new trucks. Then we'll get more life, we'll get the lifespan, and then, but we will have to catch up with our, our, uh, purchase of trucks every, uh, we, we're, we're cycling the trucks about every five years, these trucks are being cycled out.
Okay, all right. Uh, and, and finally, and this is more of a long-term thing, but I think it would be nice, or it'd be important to have it when we're making this decision two years. Can we, 'cause I mentioned this before, can we get what the DNR is, is, is calculating as the life expectancy of our, of our sanitation landfills right now?
Sure.
Because that's gonna be a big number when we have to start hauling it out of the region, or paying someone else to haul it out of the region. So that, uh, in my mind, that, that makes, that has a lot of bearing on our long-term decision.
Correct.
Okay, thanks a lot, Bill.
Thanks, Wallace, Kara?
Thanks, um, I guess, Bill, has there been any research in maybe having people opt out? I don't know if the logistics would even make sense, but if people could opt out and then pay a premium basically to have curbside recycling? I don't know if that's been-
We have, we have talked about that, but it's very difficult. We don't know what that balance is going to be, okay? And I would say that, you know, to, based upon some of our numbers right now, you're probably looking at that opt-in cost to be about $10, okay? Um, and then if, if people don't, and that's based on our current, we have, we base all of our numbers on 9,200 accounts, okay? So that number will go up. If it goes down to, you know, 8,700, 5,000 accounts, then that, that number has to go up, and that's just gonna be a sliding scale.
$12, $15, yeah.
Yeah, mm-hmm, right.
Okay, um, I guess the only other thing I'd, um, say when, you know, this, this comes to, I think we should definitely be looking at this sooner rather than later, as we've all talked about, but I think the sooner we get to get this, the more savings we're gonna realize during the year. Um, and, and that's gonna solve kind of a lot of our issues that we're looking at right now. Sorry, I got really loud in here real quick. Um, but, uh, the other thing, too, I would just like to, um, I think someone mentioned maybe just presenting us with two or three options that, um, that have dollar amounts and the impact it has and the savings it can have. So, um, that's kinda what I would like to see before we're, we're making a decision on this. And, um, thank you for all your work, Bill and Russ, on this.
Thank you. Any other council comments, Russ? Anything else on, on any subjects, and I can kinda give the direction I think we should take on this?
No, I'm, just to get clarity, the council understands that we're holding on everything on that line, on that line item list that, uh, we've sent out to you, um, and we'll have further discussions as the mayor sets forth.
Yeah, all right. Okay, so what I, what I'm looking at is we have a regular council meeting, regularly scheduled, you know, council meeting and work session for a week from, uh, tonight. So probably what we will do is just go ahead and have our next work session, you know, 5:30 next, uh, uh, next Thursday. The main, the topic will be the budget, and, uh, at that point, we will have already seen the information from, uh, from Bill and Russ on recycling, so let's anticipate having a conversation on that. So what I think I'd like to propose we do is we propose budget adjustments that, uh, Russ sent us. If we can kinda go through that, if, in, in basically decide on these, at least for the time being, that yes, we're in agreement with staff that these are good adjustments, or if we have disagreements or things to add with them, if we could get that information to, to Russ, that would, that would be helpful, at least that gives him some direction going forward. Again, knowing that we're probably gonna have the same conversation a week or two later. So, uh, this is gonna be, uh, an ongoing, ongoing thing, so we can stay on top of it from the expense side, and also, as, uh, Russ will get more information on projections. So let's plan on next Thursday at 5:30, reviewing the proposed budget adjustments and beginning our discussion on, um, recycling.
It looks like Nancy's got her hand up.
Oh, okay.
He's waving goodbye.
Sorry, no, I wasn't waving goodbye, that would've been more like, um, so, Mayor, um, um, do you anticipate like sort of going line by line on this? Or, because I wanna make sure that we talk about streets and especially comment in regard to what Wallace had suggested about it. Um, I, I just, I, I think sticking, staying the course is really important. We've got things in the pipeline with less traffic. I think it's gonna help expedite, um, actually allow the contractors to get these projects done more easily with fewer cars on the road. So, and I, I don't know how East West Gateway divvies up the funds, all that kind of stuff. So, um, I don't, I don't, I don't know if you envision dedicating time to, let's say, recycling streets and some of the big items? Or you wanna look line by line at each thing and discuss them? Or how do you wanna prioritize so that we don't run over?
The way I would look at it is, we've all, we've got this now, so we all have a week to go through it. We don't have to spend much time at all on this list unless any council member, me or staff has a differing, differing idea. I think what Russ is looking for on, on all these is just, uh, you know, an idea from council that for, for right now, these are items that, assuming things continue, that, uh, you know, can be, uh, not, money, not be expended on them. So I think how much detail we wanna go into on this is up to each council member. I think then have the discussion on recycling, and obviously, we could talk about anything else within the budget. Streets is one that, uh, absolutely, we'll, I think we'll have time for, for all that. The two main things are just give Russ direction on these proposed adjustments, and then recycling, and then we'll, we should have time for streets or any other, many other budget items that, uh, any council member wants to, uh, discuss.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else from, uh, from anyone? All right, well, seeing none, uh, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and thanks to everyone participating and, and watching. We'll talk to everybody soon.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
You said-
Where is that in there? There it is.